Headlines, arts, culture, sports, and more every weekday on Morning Edition.
Morning Edition, weekdays from five to nine on Radio IQ.
As the Trump administration's tariffs go back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, business owners are caught in the crosshairs.
It just means that I take a smaller margin and that I wait and see. And I don't know how that's going to play out for me over the long term in my career.
I'm Kai Rizdal. How one jeweler is making cuts next time on Marketplace.
Tune in for Marketplace weekdays at six on Radio IQ.
Support for Radio IQ comes from Baseline Solar, offering a dedicated service team for solar inspections, repairs, thermal drone analysis, and warranty support. Serving southwest Virginia since 2008. Baselinesolar.com.
And from the Blacksburg New School, committed to providing progressive and engaging education since 1971, now enrolling elementary and middle school students. BlacksburgNewSchool.org.
A check of traffic from Virginia 511. A vehicle fire in Henrico County causing some traffic problems this evening. It's on I-64 eastbound at mile marker 200, where the east right shoulder is closed, obviously causing some slowdowns and delays in that area. Again, that's the scene of a vehicle fire in Henrico County on I-64 east at mile marker
This is All Things Considered from NPR News. I'm Ari Shapiro.
And I'm Scott Detrow. Pope Francis made what he called the climate crisis a recurring theme during his papacy. He was the first pope to take the name of Saint Francis of Assisi, the patron saint of animals and ecology. And Piers Jeffray looks at Francis's climate legacy.
Pope Francis's 2015 encyclical or papal letter on human-caused climate change did not mince words. Quote, "The earth, our home, is beginning to look more and more like an immense pile of filth." That September, the Pope was in the United States and delivered a message of urgent action with then-President Barack Obama.
Climate change is a problem we cannot longer be left to our future generation.
Francis's climate encyclical was called, in Latin, La Datusi, or praise be to you. It laid out how humans are changing the climate. It called on rich countries to help poorer ones and inspired new organizations to form, including the Global Catholic Climate Movement. Rebecca Elliott is with the group now called La Datusi Movement.
All around the world, you saw all of these people reading the encyclical, writing letters to the editor, posting on social media, forming discussion groups in their parishes.
Elliott says her group trained about 20,000 people in 140 countries to organize tree plantings, litter cleanups, and marches for new climate policies. She says Latin America has been active. Pope Francis was born in Argentina. Elliott says bishops in Ecuador successfully campaigned for a 2023 vote to block drilling in the Amazon rainforest.
And the Catholic Church stood alongside indigenous leaders, young people, and others to support the referendum to stop oil extraction in Yasuni National Park.
Elliott says now bishops in Brazil are teaching parishioners about climate change ahead of the next United Nations Climate Conference happening there in November. In recent years, climate messages from scientists have become more urgent. Pope Francis's words have matched that. In 2023, he issued another papal letter.
He is evidently annoyed that much of humanity seems to have missed the message.
Fordham University theology professor Christiana Zinner says Francis included more science and outlined the problem more succinctly, like a professor whose students didn't get the lesson the first time. Researchers, such as Ashley Landrum at Arizona State University, have studied whether Francis's climate messages changed opinions.
What we found was the Pope did not change people's minds about climate change. The Pope changed people's minds about himself.
She says he was mostly preaching to the converted. Politically liberal people loved Pope Francis's climate messages, while conservatives, even conservative Catholics, were not swayed. Still, Landrum says he did plant a flag by showing that acting on climate change is consistent with socially conservative Catholic values. Zinner, the Fordham professor, thinks Francis's work on climate will have a lasting effect on the Catholic Church.
I think the Catholic Church now has to be seen as an entity that is concerned about care for creation and people's faith lives. I don't think that can be erased.
Around the world, more than 8,000 families, schools, groups, dioceses, and other organizations have pledged to take actions in response to Francis's climate encyclical. Now, researchers will watch to see how much attention a new Pope gives to the problem of human-caused climate change. Jeff Brady, NPR News.
Before World War II, some 11 million people spoke Yiddish, the historic language of Ashkenazi Jews. The language nearly disappeared because of the Holocaust and assimilation, but experts are quelling, as they say the language is showing some chutzpah and making a comeback. Robin Estrin from member station KCRW tells us why.
At a Jewish cultural center on the 14th floor of an old bank building in downtown Los Angeles, Rabbi Zach Golden is reading a poem called "California." Golden translates from Yiddish.
I drift, drift into sleep, becoming a desert dream.
This space, a hybrid synagogue and Jewish bookstore, is called Dernister.
Dernister means the hidden in Yiddish.
Golden co-founded it in 2020 as a center for Yiddish language and cultural events in Los Angeles. He says their events are drawing bigger crowds.
This may have been the first time this amount of young people have showed up to such a thing for, like, 10, 15 years.
This interest in Yiddish boomed nationwide during the pandemic, says Sarah Bunin Benor. She's the director of the Jewish Language Project at Hebrew Union College.
There was a very strong spike in interest in Yiddish, in learning Yiddish online, in participating in Yiddish activities and Yiddish conversation groups and Duolingo and Yiddish Wordle.
Duolingo, the language learning platform, said by email that more than 360,000 people around the world are studying Yiddish on the app today. About half are under 30 years old. What's happening is radical, because a majority of the 6 million Jews killed in the Holocaust were Yiddish speakers.
Yiddish then becomes associated with death.
Aaron Paley is the founder of an LA-based organization for preserving Yiddish culture called Yiddishkite.
So it becomes, just by default, almost a negative thing to talk about Yiddish and to speak Yiddish. And it's not something, then, that the Jews are proud of.
Yiddish experts say most Jews in America assimilated and learned English, though for some ultra-orthodox Jews, it remains the language of daily life. Meanwhile, Israel adopted Hebrew, not Yiddish, as an official language. All of that contributed to its decline. Years ago, when Zach Golden wanted to learn the language of his ancestors, he says he was discouraged.
I distinctly remember saying I was going to go learn Yiddish in the middle of rabbinical school and being told it was a waste of time.
Now, those who promote and study Yiddish say people are coming back to the language for different reasons. Some Jews are hungry to connect with their heritage. Golden wanted to speak to his bubby and reclaim the culture the Nazis tried to scrub away.
By knowing ourselves, our history, our language, our culture, that's, knowledge is power.
Others who are critical of Israel want to explore Jewish identity outside of Zionism. That's the case for Iris Malka Morell, who organized the poetry reading back in downtown LA.
Growing up in the US, like, we're really raised to believe that if you're Jewish, like, the place you go is Israel and that the culture you go to is there now. And Yiddish really is like a different alternative to that.
Zionist or anti-Zionist, Golden doesn't really care why everyone's here. He's just glad to see so many people excited about Yiddish. For NPR News, I'm Robin Estrin in Los Angeles.
You're listening to All Things Considered from NPR News.
And welcome to our evening meeting for April 22nd. The board held its regular afternoon session at 2:00 PM today, followed by closed session. So we moved to item I, certification resolution. And the closed meeting just concluded. Nothing was discussed, except the matter which was identified in the motion to convene in closed session. Only those matters lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed. Is there a motion to adopt the certification resolution?
I moved the motion.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. We move to item J, second reading of ordinances and public hearings. First item number one, the petition of Caven LLC to rezonate approximately 1.286 acres from R1, low-density residential district, to C2, high-intensity commercial district, to construct a hotel located at 5709, 5755, and 5761 Fallbrook Drive, Kataba Magisterial District. Philip Thompson, Director of Planning, this is the second reading. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you mentioned, this is a rezoning from R1 to C2. So first location, it's located behind the existing Exxon station there off of West Main Street at Dixie Caverns exit off of, at 132 off of Interstate 81. This is where the proposed property is located. As you mentioned, there are three parcels involved off of Fallbrook Drive, a little over one acre, 1.2 acres. It's currently vacant, and the quest is to rezonate to C2 to construct and operate a hotel. A couple photos. This picture is looking at the, you can see the picture straight ahead. You can see the ramp to Interstate 81 to the right. Looking from West Main Street, looking back towards the interstate, you can see the Exxon Station, and the property sits directly behind it. This is taken from Fallbrook Drive or the corner of the Exxon Station, looking back at the property. There is an existing accessory building on the property that would be removed as part of the construction of that hotel. And this is looking at it from the back of the Exxon Station towards the property that's there, that's being considered for the rezoning. And this is just the extension of Fallbrook Drive, looking back towards the ramp off Interstate 81. So there are three properties proposed for rezoning that are currently vacant, other than a small structure on the southeast part of the property, which will be removed as part of the proposed project. Prior to owner purchasing this property in 2017, there were, the properties were utilized as single-family homes on those three properties. The structures associated with those uses have been demolished. Our ordinance defines a hotel motel motor lodge as a building or group of attached or detached buildings containing lodging units intended primarily for rental or lease to transients by the day, week, or month. So the rezoning to C2 because a hotel motel motor lodge is a permitted use in the C2 district. There's a concept plan in your, the application, in your board packet. And so it should be noted that the property that's being rezoned is what's shown in green. They will also, the owner is also the owner of the Exxon Station that's already zoned C2. So if this is rezoned, they will then re-subdivide the property to be able to construct the hotel. The new lot would be what's in blue. But what's being rezoned is what's in the green outline. Four-story hotel proposed, I think 87 rooms, 89 parking spaces, and all the associated stormwater would be associated with that as well, and all the other development regulations that go along with that. Zoning, it is R1. As you can see, it is C2 to the east and northeast, south to the south and southwest at C2 and AR is the surrounding zoning. Future land use is all core, which is our highest intensity commercial use. So the hotel use would be consistent with the core future land use designation, also consistent with the Glenboro Community Plan, as well as trying to locate hotels at this particular location. April 1st, the planning commission held a public hearing. The two citizens spoke during the public hearing, focused a lot on stormwater management and the drainage ditch from the Exxon Station. They stated that it was inadequate. They talked about additional development would add to the current drainage issue. The drainage ditch was not properly installed and maintained. They talked about flooding, mainly on the main channel, I believe, wrote off concerns from future I-81 widening and the need to protect a few sheds of Dixie Caverns. Planning commission discussed stormwater management, runoff buffers, the drainage shed of the main channel, flooding, erosion control, the drainage ditch maintenance and capacity, stormwater quality, the car topography, site plan review process, stormwater maintenance agreements, surrounding zoning and land uses, and then that the project was consistent with the future land use designation of core. So the planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning from R1 to C2 with the following proffered condition. The property shall be limited to the following uses, which is hotel motel motor lodge. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have questions for Mr. Thompson? Yeah.
Yes, sir. I have quite a list. And just to kind of start the discussion and get some feedback from you.
Sure.
And then it might be something that the petitioner wants to address later, but a couple of things that I took note of, the staff report was very well done, and I noted that, there you are, talking about rezoning three parcels, and the owner, the applicant, also owns the Which Which Exxon Station. And so they're talking about some interconnectivity in between the two. So I would suspect that there will be some kind of drive, maybe on the backside of Which Which and Exxon into the hotel property. And I just wondered if there was any specific information there shared.
Yeah, so if you look at this, the concept plan, so when you look at the blue line and the southern blue line, or the one that's kind of angled to the right-hand side of it, that is actually the existing access road to the Exxon Stations, behind Exxon Station. So their access, while they do have an access further down off of Fallbrook, two of their entrances is coming off that existing driveway, aisle way that's currently exists behind Exxon.
It looks like on the upper entrance that there is something that could be potentially blocking maybe a dumpster or something.
Yeah, it could be. I'll let them speak to that. But my guess is what will happen is they'll relocate that if that's the access point.
Sure. And then was there any consideration for an entrance off of Dow Hollow?
I don't think VDOT would allow that.
They wouldn't? I wondered if it was too close to the...
I think it's probably still limited access off the interstate, probably to 460. So you can't access Dow Hollow.
Okay, okay. That takes care of that. And then, well, I know buffering is not required. Was there any discussion of buffering?
To the campground or to off the interstate?
Just in between the Dixie Caverns property and the hotel.
So there'd probably be, because the road kind of is on the one separates it, I imagine there'll be some landscaping that will be put in place between the parking and the hotel off of Fallbrook. That's probably just part of our regular development regulations, that there are landscaping requirements between access roads and parking.
Oh, okay.
Now, will there be much on the other side of Fallbrook? Hard to see where, I guess, where they could put that unless they're putting it on Dixie Caverns property.
Good point. So I'm just curious if you are aware of any other conversations? Our smart scale application was submitted and not approved. Wondering about any other conversations about safety in that exit 132?
Yeah, so there's been some minor, you know, I think VDOT, the residency office, has a plan to do some short-term improvements out there. I think Megan may have had emails sent to you about those improvements there. There's also conversations going on with VDOT about the potential of a traffic light instead. You know, there were certain funds that were designated for that project if we had the peanut roundabout through the TPO. And so the question is, is could that money be used potentially for a traffic light? I know there's some conversations about that. I think it's still being reviewed internally by VDOT.
Thank you. There was some conversation about potentially a sidewalk being used or needed in between the two properties, as there might be some that envision a frequent pedestrian traffic in between the two properties. And so was there any conversation about the crosswalks?
I'll let Chris Burns talk a little bit about that. But if you look at the site on the existing Exxon property, which is already zoned C2, which the hotel's coming up, you can see kind of the sidewalk on the hotel property, which kind of comes to that access road. It would also, the main thing would be, how do you cross over to the Exxon Station, I guess? And you'd just be probably just crossing that aisle way to get to, because it looks like there's sidewalk on the side of the Exxon Station as well.
Right, right. I just wanted to know if there was any formal conversation about that.
No, my guess is during site plan review, there might be some conversations about maybe painting a crosswalk across that.
And so it's my understanding that there's going to be some conversations about turnaround at the end of Fallbrook?
Either turnaround or they could use that. They'll probably maybe dedicate it, make it a T-turnaround, just the access point there.
Gotcha.
That would be my guess of how they would handle that.
There was some conversation in the staff report about the stormwater management and that there should be some ongoing evaluation about the adequacy of the current situation. And there was some verbiage about some erosion and such that was going along the natural water course. And I was wondering if there was any conversation specific to that internally or with the petitioner?
So there's a couple things. I'll talk about a few things if you have specific questions. I do know that Tarek Manir is here. He could answer more specific questions regarding stormwater, if you have that. Yeah, there's those two things. I think the main, so you understand, there's a kind of a, the drainage shed for this area is like 2,000 acres. It goes way up and across the interstate and so forth. And I'm sure Chris will touch on this. And so the site's only, the Exxon and the hotel's only two acres of the 2,000 acres. So there's the issue with stormwater, which goes through the drainage ditch down to the main channel. The main channel is, that's, there's a bigger, that's a bigger watershed. So the main conversation that they talked about, at least at the planning commission meeting, a very lengthy discussion, was the drainage ditch and stormwater. And it's my understanding that they will have some type of facility and then potentially have that pre-loading, you know, the pre-development will probably drain to that drainage ditch as well. So through the site plan process, they would have to do the stormwater calculations on not only the existing site, but the hotel site, in making sure that drainage ditch is adequate. Again, I do know that Tarek and his staff went out and did a field visit to look at the drainage ditch. But I do think there probably needs to be some reconstruction of that ditch as part of this process.
And then just as a concern from, I think, some people, I took note of the parking lot lighting, and I know that we have a maximum height for those poles. Can you remind me, we don't have a maximum height for those poles?
The only thing in our zoning warrants that we have, has anything to do with lighting height is in the Clearbrook Village Overlake District. Everywhere else, it's unlimited.
Is that right?
That is correct.
And, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's all I have for now.
Now, I will say, while there's no height requirement, there is a limit of what it is at the property line, right? The half-foot candle light standard is at the property line. So that helps dictate what the height's going to be.
And so remind me, so if we don't have a specific height limit and we have a certain, I can't remember what, what's the terminology for the light measurement?
Yeah, light meter.
A light meter? Okay. At the property line, is it a requirement that the lights be downlit?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a requirement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now.
And the other thing I will share, as part of the site plan process, they have to show on their site plan the light readings that would be proposed with the lighting that they have.
Okay.
All throughout the site. And so that it does meet the requirement of our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a few questions, but I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask him, Tarek, if he'd come forward.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Chairman.
Hey, so I'm gonna put my developer hat on.
Yes, sir.
And so if I have a neighbor below me downstream, and they're talking about they're getting flooded, and something hasn't been done correctly on my property or my development, can you kind of give me the background and the history of Exxon? Do they have underground tanks? Do they have any type of retention system? And what did you find out when you went onto the site?
Yes. Originally, the developer and his engineer developed underground tanks, and then later on, the plan has changed to establish a ditch that will carry the water through the Dixie Caverns property into the existing waterway, which is a established or old creek that runs along the property lines. The ditch that is in place today needs repair, as was mentioned by Philip, and that will be looked at as the development, the new development comes in for review. I have went personally to check what the condition of the ditch is, and I also walked the entire length of the creek along the Dixie Cavern. And I have a pretty good idea of the condition and enough pictures to show the current conditions. I have them in the office. I didn't bring them down here with me, but I'll be glad to share.
So how did they get out of not putting the underground tanks in when we required your... So how did they get out of not putting the underground tanks in when we're required to retain that stormwater at a release rate? How did that get by us?
That's an alternative that they provided later on. And it was approved by the county engineer at the time. I was not in the office, so I did not have the chance to make the final decisions on that issue.
So who owns the ditch where the water is collecting and going through?
It's a part of the Roanoke County easement or drainage easement.
Okay, so it's an easement?
We own it, yes.
Okay, so we can improve it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can improve it, however, if the new development going to utilize that ditch, we're going to ask the developer to realign the ditch and repair it as part of the development if it's going to carry additional water coming from the new development. According to the engineer, Chris Burns, he indicated that they have enough or the ditch is, will be able to carry the additional capacity or the additional runoff from the new development into it. So we haven't seen the plans. We haven't seen the exact detail plans yet. But I'm sure Chris has prepared enough engineering plans to justify what he has done, what he has said to the planning commission. We'll be glad to review that, of course, when that become, come in for review after the rezoning is approved.
So he's got a possible retention pond on the concept plan, a possible storm facility?
Yes, he has indicated that and it shows, I believe, in the schematic.
Yeah.
But again, we have not seen the detailed plans.
Okay.
We consider that as a concept plan for now.
Right. You'll see that later on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Thompson, we know that the SmartScale application is not recommended.
That's correct.
Is any portion of the property that is subject to this application, would any part of that property be utilized for the roundabout? Assuming that we resubmit the SmartScale application and comes back again, is there any part of this property that would be part of that?
Not the back part.
Okay, I could just, I guess I was anticipating that if any part of it were necessary for that, we'd like to reserve that portion off.
I appreciate that.
On the possibility that might come. I wasn't sure, but...
Yeah, most of that's on West Bain Street.
That's what I figured. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. North?
Speaking of SmartScale, unless Commonwealth Transportation Board and VDOT agree to change the measurements of projects submitted in round six, in round seven, it will not score any better next time. And I don't anticipate that happening. And my conversations inside bars with some folks have been that they're going to try to see if they can capture some of the revenue, and I think you mentioned this in your comments, some of the dollars to put a stoplight in. But that's still for discussion when the Commonwealth Transportation Board comes through Roanoke, May 14th. They take public comments. I'm sure there'll be some comments about this. And then they've got to vote on their final budget for next year with respect to SmartScale. It's sad, though, that this probably would have made it under the old measurements.
Well, it's unfortunate because when they, when we saw those plans before, in my unscientific and uneducated view, that looked like a great solution, a safe solution for the problem that we have out there. And it's not the hotel's fault.
No.
I mean, it's, there's a pre-existing problem there, and this would have been a great solution.
It would have been. And I think that they're going to have to, with the hotel, they're going to have to put a stoplight in. I think that could help reduce, mitigate that safety.
You done?
I'm done. Unless you have more questions, I'm just here to answer questions.
Thank you.
All right. So invite the representatives of the petitioners to come forward and speak.
Concept plan?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I also appreciate Philip doing a lot of the hard work already. My name's Chris Burns with Ballzer and Associates, here with the applicant cavern LLC. Deep Patel's here as well, in case you have any questions for him. So want to add just a little bit of light to some of the items that you brought up. I won't spend too much time on the actual request. I think Philip did a great job of kind of talking through that. But, you know, we are here to rezone 1.286 acres from R1 to C2. We are essentially surrounded on three sides by public road frontages, including I-81. So it's really not a, not an ideal location for the low-density residential current zoning that we have. And I did want to point out, the applicant did develop the Exxon of Witchwich and still owns and maintains that piece of property. And the intent here is to develop this site with a nationally branded hotel that he would own and operate as well. We've kind of touched on a few things with the concept plan. To answer your question about a turnaround, it is our understanding we'll need to provide and come to an agreement with VDOT on some type of turnaround at the end of Fallbrook Drive. And that would be worked out with VDOT as part of the site plan process. As far as buffering, I did want to point out, on the concept plan, we will be required by the zoning ordinance to install essentially a row of landscaping between the public road and the site. So there would be vegetation in between Fallbrook Drive and the hotel itself.
So on the side to the right of the road, there would be a line of vegetation?
Yes, trees and shrubs. I've also looked at, you know, really regardless of where that hotel is built on the site, based on setbacks, it can't be any closer than about 350 feet to any of the campsites on the Dixie Caverns property. And there is a lot of existing dense vegetation to the southwest of Fallbrook Drive that provides some pretty good buffering already.
On the campground property?
Correct, yes. Between, essentially between Fallbrook Drive and the creek. So stormwater, just, I want to back up and kind of give a little bit of background. There was a lot of discussion about that at the planning commission. And so I just want to make sure that we're, that we're fully explaining what's out there. So on the concept, there is storm sewer kind of at the bottom of the page where the entrance to the Exxon station is. That's essentially the low point on the property. And so when the Exxon was developed, the site was designed to drain there. All stormwater management requirements that were in place at the time were met. The ditch that was downstream of that storm sewer system was designed for that site as well as future development on the hotel site. And that will be reevaluated during the site plan process for the hotel. That'll be a requirement if we're going to discharge to it. So that ditch will be evaluated for capacity. As Philip mentioned, our site is about two acres. There's 2,000 acres draining to the creek below that ditch. And that's really where the flooding and the erosion issues stem from. So there's really nothing that we can do on the site that's really going to impact that situation positively or negatively. But we will be required now, under the new regulations, we will be required to provide a detention facility on site. And that'll either be a surface pond, like what we have shown on the plan, or some kind of underground system. And we'll work with county staff during the site plan process for that. An updated traffic study was provided to VDOT as part of the rezoning application. We do have concurrence with that, and there aren't any road improvements that are warranted or anything like that. Walkway connection was mentioned between this site and the Exxon. That's not something that we've discussed, but I do think that it's of interest to my client and certainly something that we will consider, because I think that's an advantage to really both properties.
Would you, would you say that it would even be ADA compliant?
I think that it would, but we'd have to look at it. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you all have.
You can go ahead.
Okay, so let's hang out on this stormwater real quick.
Sure.
Did Ballzer do the stormwater for the Exxon?
Yes.
Okay. So are you retaining any water post-construction?
So there was no detention facility provided with that development, based on the regulations that were in place at the time.
So you weren't required to hold it and didn't have to do quality and all that?
Quality, yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Quantity, the ditch was an alternative that was, that was, that met the regulations at the time.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So new regulations, you're going to have to retain the hotel site?
Correct.
And then release it at a rate?
Yes. So there will be a reduction in stormwater on all the, you know, all the storms that we're required to analyze. And that'll all be submitted as part of the site plan to community development, all those calculations.
So I didn't realize it had 2,000 acres. That's quite a bit.
Yeah.
And Exxon is what, acre and a half?
I'm not sure, but that sounds about right.
Okay, two acres. So that's a lot of acreage behind it.
Yes.
So you're not putting a lot of water down that ditch, that rock ditch?
Correct, it's relative, but we will, you know, we'll evaluate that and make sure that it's adequate to handle that.
Okay, so it's pavement and rooftop drains, basically, coming pretty fast. It's going to be that pavement.
Yeah, so whatever stormwater detention facility we put in, though, would be upstream of that ditch.
Right.
And so that flow would be reduced.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Yes.
So just a couple more questions. I wanted to go back to at least one item with the parking lot lighting. Have there been any thoughts on what kind of lighting will be used? And I know that that's specific, and it's very specific to site plan review. I know that there has just been some discussion about protecting the adjacent properties from any other light. While I know that we have that standard for measuring the light at the property line, if there had been yet any discussion about the type of lighting?
So there have not. I can say that we've done a lot of hotel projects. And typically, you know, those poles don't get higher than about 25 feet. And specific to the county requirements, we are required, as Philip said, to do a photometric plan and show that we don't exceed half a foot candle at any property line. And in this case, on the Dixie Cavern side, that would actually be at the closer edge of the right-of-way of Fallbrook Drive. So there would be an additional 50 feet there that would be unlighted. So I've got to think that those light levels would be near around.
I understand what you're saying. I appreciate that. I appreciate that enlightenment. See, is there anything else? Talked about sidewalks.
You can do full cutoff lighting, which just shoots the lighting down.
Straight down?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's a requirement.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I thought it was too, but I also thought there was a height limit.
Yeah.
So let's see. The, it sounds like the dumpster pad will probably be moved.
If needed, yeah. If needed, we'll evaluate that.
Okay, understood. Mr. Chairman, I believe all of my concerns have been addressed.
Okay. Any other questions from other board members or the petitioners? Okay. I don't have any more for you, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Tarek, we don't have a question for you, but...
No, but I would like just to, a couple of comments quickly. Chris mentioned, and you have asked him about the detention of the water or the drainage from the site. The new regulations kicks in July 1st, which means if he brings in the plans before July 1st, then he may have the potential of not having to detain water. So we don't know as of this moment whether the plans come in before July 1st or not. Today, if he comes in and say, I wanted to use the new regulations, then we'll apply that. I just want to make sure that this is clear. The other point about the turnaround, that might be also discussed during the plan review when we look into the fire protections for fire trucks. So that is, it's premature right now to talk about that because we haven't seen the plans yet and we didn't apply any of the fire protections into the site yet. I just wanted to clarify those.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we have now heard from the petitioners, from Mr. Thompson. We've gone through all our questions. Now I'm ready to open the public hearing. Understand, we have three petitions that want to speak. Is that correct? Do we have three people to talk?
No, I think what that's, there's three petitions and you're going to have a public hearing for each one.
Okay, has nothing to do with the first one, okay. All right. Okay. So I'm going to open the public meeting so we don't have anybody to talk on the first, first item. Okay. Going once, going twice. Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing on this petition. And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is in the beautiful Catawba district. And I would just like to make a real quick comment prior to my, to my motion. But, you know, this is really an interesting area, and I think it has a lot of potential economically for our future. And I am discouraged somewhat that we didn't win that SmartScale funding. I think this would be a lot easier going forward. But I do hold out hope that there will be some temporary measures in place to help with the safety of that core intersection. None of this is the fault of the hotel. I do have some concerns about the stormwater, but I'm going to directly ask staff to work with the petitioner on these issues that we can best mitigate and continue to improve, certainly not worsen, the situation. And we want the hotel to be a good neighbor going forward. And we certainly do not want it to be a worsening situation. So I ask that staff would continue to work with the petitioner going forward on this issue. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion. I find that the proposed rezoning request is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan. It's good zoning practice and will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request with the following one proffer as it has been requested. The property shall be limited to the following uses: hotel, motel, motor lodge.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman. I think all of us have had in our agenda materials, we've seen some of the emails and the concerns that have been expressed. I think we've all discussed the issues involving the stormwater problems. But I guess from my perspective, since this application is consistent with our comprehensive plan, we've identified this is core. And it is consistent more particularly with the Glenver Community Plan,
It is.
which in much, in my view, that's much more specific and much more targeted. So I will support the program, the application, but I understand the concerns that have been expressed to us. But I look at its consistency with our comp plan and the community plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. We move on to item two, the petition of Sergey Larkin to rezone approximately .7155 acre of... to rezone approximately .7155 acre of land from AR Agricultural Residential District to AV Agricultural Village Center District and to obtain a special use permit to operate retail sales located in the 3600 block on Bradshaw Road, Catawba Magisterial District. Paul Thompson, Director of Planning, welcome again, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you mentioned, this is two actions, all combined into one application, a rezoning from AR to AV, obtaining a special use permit to operate retail sales. So the property is located off of Bradshaw Road, close to the intersection of Old Catawba Road. Across the street is Mason's Cove Church of the Brethren, and it's near also Watkins Market off of Bradshaw Road. Again, the property's 0.7155 acre. Currently is vacant, again, requesting it to go from AR to AV and get a special use permit for retail sales. So floodplain map, there is floodplain on the property, however, the development of the site does not affect the floodplain. Couple photographs. This is, we've kind of got a round entrance or a U-shaped entrance on the property, so this is the one that's furthest to the west. So you can see what's on the property. Again, there's existing gravel that's been on the property for a while. This is looking back, you can see the church in the background across the street. And then this is the other entrance that kind of circles back around. You can see the property's fairly flat. And then when you get, the creek kind of hugs the property, has probably a 15-foot drop-off down to the creek on the backside of the property. So, retail sales, sale or rental with incidental services of commonly-used goods and merchandise for personal or household use, but excludes those classified more specifically in our zoning ordinance. So it is allowed in the AV District with a special use permit. We do have use and design standards in the AV District for retail sales, which limit retail sales to no more than 3,000 square feet. The proposed building is 1,800 square feet. So it falls within that. Concept plan, you see one entrance off of Bradshaw Road, the 1,800-square-foot metal building with six to nine parking spaces, a loading area, an approved drain field area, and then you can also see a well site there as well. Again, the site will not generate that much traffic. The applicant anticipates it being six to nine vehicle trips per day. Couple renderings that the applicant submitted in their application of the layout, just kind of gives you how the floor plan will look, with the, you know, showing sewing machines on the property, what have you, and the fabric sales and so forth. Couple photos of what the inside would possibly look like as well. Existing zoning is AR. Again, to the north, east, and west, you have AR zoning. Across the street, across Bradshaw Road, you have AV zoning. For future land use, it is Village Center. So it serves as the commercial and institutional focal point of surrounding rural residential and farming establishments. The majority of commercial and institutional activities in the Village Center areas are designed, scaled, and marketed to best serve the product and service needs of the residents. Again, appropriate land use types include agricultural production and services, convenience retail, ecotourism parks, and outdoor recreation, residential rural community centers, and rural highway retail. So the rezoning and special use permit is consistent with the Village Center designation. Again, planning commission held a public hearing on April 1st. Two citizens spoke in opposition. Their concerns included the property's ability to be developed, what uses could go on the property if the business fails, and they were opposed to any retail or development in the area not related to farm or agricultural use. Planning commission discussed the existing business, the subject of drain field issues, the well and potable water, a special option for water as well, the floodplain, the surrounding zoning and land uses, and that the project is consistent with the future land use designation of Village Center. So the planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning from AR to AV and recommends approval of the special use permit for retail sales. Hope you have to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any board members have a question for Mr. Thompson? Yes, Ms. Hooker.
This again is in the beautiful Catawba district.
It is.
And I just have a couple of comments and questions for staff, and I just wanna have maybe a little more commentary about Village Center. And when future land use calls for Village Center, I know that we've talked around it, but what typically is found in a Village Center?
Well, again, I think if you look at what's out there, you know, you have the market that's there, retail sales there for the Watkins Market, you have church, which is institutional uses. Again, I think you're gonna find it being, what we refer to it as, it's probably the commercial hub of the ag areas, right, the rural center. That's why you see to the south is also Zoned AV, which is the same designation for that type of use, right? And so it's smaller-scale retail, really to help serve the area residents in that area. So, so that's what I, how I look at it, it's kind of the node of the rural community.
And so with this specific petition, it, you know, it fits the Village Center idea, and this specifically can only go forward with a special use permit.
That's correct.
Because of the retail component.
That's correct.
And, let's see, when I was looking at some of the information about land use types, I think in the, in some of the staff report, and it talks specifically about the rural highway retail, it was encouraging small-scale rural establishments that provide retail goods and services to passing motorists. And so I think that we have established that this is something that fits
Yep.
in this, in this area. I was of particular interest, just because I know that there's been some commentary in the community about some of the flooding and some of the FEMA mapping and such. And I took some from the staff report. It says flood zone AE is very close and regulated. The county will require an elevation 3 certificate for building approval. What does that mean?
So they're gonna have to have a surveyor, probably develop a document that verifies the elevation of the floodplain, but then also of their building, make sure it meets the requirements of our floodplain ordinance.
So even though there was no blue in the mapping of the, of the property, they're still gonna like double-check?
Yep.
Just to make sure that it's, that it's done correctly and that it's not gonna be a problem for the flooding? I know that at one point I saw something about the hours, but I can't recall what the hours of operation were. Do you, and if not, I'll ask the petitioners.
Yeah, I think the petition.
Okay.
Their normal business hours from what I recall, mentioning during the planning commission meeting.
Okay. That's all I have for staff at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, any other questions, board members? Okay. We invite the petition to come forward if they would like to speak about the rezoning. Just state your name for us, please.
An address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Yulia Lorena. I'm the petitioner's wife, and I'm representing our business and idea tonight. So, thank you so much, Ms. Martha, about talking, for talking about the beautiful zone, which I agree completely. We're even Mason's Cove ourselves, and we plan to bring that service and that retail space to the community, not to only sell stuff, but also to build a point of interest in the little village. We do quilting business, I think that hasn't been mentioned yet. So we not only quilt for people, we offer the quilting services, but we also teach people how to quilt. So our big mission is to preserve the traditional art. And my big plan is to, you know, maybe to have like a Saturday or Sunday classes for the little girls, to teach them for no charge, just like an act of kindness for the local community. We also do a lot of charity projects for veterans, for children hospices, and NICU, small, little, teeny-tiny babies, is our big thank you, because we have a baby like that. So the operation hours that was brought up today will completely line up with the local school buses, because we have two kids who go to Glenver schools. So we'll start our day when they're on the bus, and we'll end the day when they're off the bus. So it's the bus stop right at the, at the property, right there. Any more questions, please?
So you kind of indicated what, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, you recognize.
So you indicated the hours would be in line with school hours, but do you have specific hours in mind?
Absolutely.
And days of the week that you will routinely be open?
Yes, we will work on the business days only, so we'll officially open the doors at 10:00 AM, I think, and we'll close the doors at 3:00. And we'll be closed on the weekends, especially Sunday, to not, not to provide more cars and traffic with the church, which is around, like across the street.
So Monday through Friday, 10 to 3 is your, is your estimated hour of operation?
Yep, absolutely.
So it's a fairly limited, small-scale?
Yes, but it's, it's the hours, these are the hours when we open the doors for people, which doesn't mean that we leave the building.
Sure.
We lock the doors and keep working.
Sure, understood.
Yeah, well, we also plan some special events every now and then, like, you know, Christmas gatherings, cookie baking, something related to, you know, just serving the community. As well as the teaching, like the classes, quilting classes, that's why, well, we plant nine parking lots, and we don't plan to gather big crowds. So like, if somebody shares the car together, maybe it will be 12 people on site at once, no more.
I have no more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any board members have any questions for our petitioner?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any petitioners that have signed up, or any people to talk about? Okay. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I am happy to make this motion for the Catawba district and the Mason's Cove area specifically. In my motion to approve, I find that the proposed zoning request is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan, is good zoning practice, and will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request as it has been requested. And if I may ask for a point of clarification from the attorney, and I just assume we're rolling this all into one motion.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I'll go on to say, I also find that the proposed special use permit meets the requirements of Section 30-19-1 of the Roanoke County Code, and that the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article 4, Use and Design Standards of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance, is in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan and will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. I therefore also move that we approve the petition to obtain a special use permit.
Okay, everybody's heard the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Tammy. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Thank you. We move on to item three, the petition of Roanoke Valley Holdings LLC to rezone approximately 11.688 acres from C-2S High Intensity Commercial District with special use permit to R3 Medium Density Multi-Family Residential District located on 5727 and 5633 Williamson Road and along the 5300 and 5400 block of Floris Road, Hollands Magisterial District. Mr. Thompson, you are back at the dais.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This property, as you mentioned, is, this is kind of between, is on Floris Road. This is between Floris and Williamson Road there, butts the city to the south. As you mentioned, 5627, 5633 Williamson Road, and two adjoining parcels along the 5300 block of Floris Road, a little under 12 acres. They have some existing metal buildings on property. I think those were from maintenance of existing property, that those will go away as this project is approved and they develop the property. Again, they are requesting to rezone it from C2S High Intensity Commercial District with special use permit to R3 for Medium Density Multi-Family Residential. Again, they're trying to develop a residential development with a maximum number of 69 dwelling units. So a couple photos, this is on Floris Road, some of the frontage of it. They do have an existing entrance that's there that goes back to the metal buildings. This kind of shows that entrance going back to those metal buildings on the property. If you look to the interior of the property, it looks fairly flat. It rises a little bit on the right-hand side of the photograph, but you're looking back towards the city of Roanoke, the homes that abut the property. Again, this is taken from, kind of that angle from the property of the city of Roanoke, properties looking back towards that entrance that we just looked at previously. And again, this is looking back at some of those homes along the property in the city of Roanoke. And you can see it better here on the right-hand side, those dwellings that are in the city. We did have a community meeting. We sent out 217 letters, both in the city and in the county. We had that meeting at Mountain View Elementary School on March 20th from 5:00 to 7:00. I think there was a total of three or four people that showed up with going their concerns or trying to find out more information. So this proposed rezoning to R3, what they're looking at is having, allowing four different types of residential dwelling units, single-family detached, single-family attached, townhouses, and two-family dwellings. So we defined a single-family dwelling as a site-built or modular dwelling, building designed for, or used exclusively as one dwelling unit for permanent occupancy. A single-family attached is two single-family dwellings sharing a common wall area, each on its own individual lot. Townhouses are a grouping of three or more attached single-family dwellings in a row in which each unit has its own front and rear access to the outside. No unit is located over another unit, and each unit is separated from any other unit by one or more common walls. Then two-family dwelling is the use of an individual lot for two dwelling units which share at least one common wall, each occupied by one family. Two-family dwelling, most people call it a duplex, so. So all those dwelling units are allowed in R3. There would be a buffer required between the city of Roanoke zoning property and this property. It would be a Type A buffer, and there's two different options for that. Concept plan shows a general layout of 69 units, one access off of, one main road access off of Floris Road, which would be state-maintained roads. And then they have, do have a private alley, a 20-foot alley shown on this plan. And they show the different units that could possibly go there. Now, they are not proffering this concept plan. What they're proffering is the total number of units, and then we'll talk about some of the other properties. So the plan itself is not being proffered, I just wanna make that clear as part of this process. They do show some, they did some, had some renderings in their application, which are shown here, of previous projects they worked on, and these may be similar to these types of units that they show in the application. As mentioned, the existing zoning is C2S High Intensity Commercial District with special use. To the north is Zone C2, to the east is R1 and R1S, to the south is C2, and in the city is R7, which is residential single-family, and then to the west is C2 as well. So this is Core, which is typically our urban commercial and high-intensity residential developments are encouraged. Again, one of the things is, an appropriate land use includes multi-family residential units, up to 24 units per acre. And again, what we say in the plan, it's mostly consistent, so the single-family detached and attached would not be consistent, but the duplex and the townhouses would be consistent with Core, with that multi-family units. Public hearing again on April 1st by the planning commission. There was one citizen who spoke. The concerns raised by that individual included that there are existing flooding problems on Floris Road, that the density of the proposed development compared to the surrounding neighborhood is higher than what's in the surrounding neighborhood. I had questions about how the proposed alley, the 20-foot alley, would function for school buses, garbage trucks, fire trucks, and similar vehicles, and only having one access road into development in case of an emergency. The planning commission discussed the total number of dwelling units, the allowable residential uses, access to the property, stormwater management, the maintenance of the alley, sidewalks along Floris Road, surrounding zoning and land uses, and the future land use designation. So the planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning from C2S to R3 with the following proffered conditions. proffered conditions. So the maximum number of residential dwelling units to be built will not exceed 69 total units. Residential dwelling unit types may include single-family detached, single-family attached, two-family dwellings, or townhouses. The third one was revised, so the one that was in red is the new proffer. Originally, they were going to proffer general conformance with those renderings. They came back after, during the planning commission meeting to revise that, which is all front elevations of the residential dwelling units shall have a combination of masonry finish and siding, and all above-ground foundations shall be faced with either siding or masonry. Four, the proposed development will be served by one new public entrance onto Floris Road. Five, no new private residential driveways will be constructed onto Floris Road, and the owner will grant Roanoke County a sidewalk easement 10 feet in width along Floris Road for the purpose of a future public sidewalk. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions, board members?
Mr. Thompson, just to go over the 69 units, I understand them, six will be single-family detached, along with two family dwellings, which make up 36 units, and townhouses, 27 units, a total of 69. Is that your understanding?
No, so what, that is what the concept plan shows, right? So they're not, so what they want to, what they're proffering is the maximum number of units will be 69 units, and that can be made up of single-family detached, single-family attached, townhouses, or duplexes. What the applicant, and I'm not speaking for them, but what they mentioned was that they want as much flexibility based on the market when they come to develop the project. And that may change the mix of the units based at that time.
But these were the numbers on the concept?
Correct. And so the maximum, and 69 is the maximum, if they do single-family detached, most likely that number goes down significantly. So they want to have as much options, and that's why they also kind of changed that third proffer regarding the housing style, because they want as much flexibility to deal with the market conditions at the time that they develop.
Okay.
Let's see. So I understand that there will not be any street parking on Floris Road?
Yes, that's my understanding as well. There's no driveway access off of Floris at all. They have the one main access for the public road, they have the private, again, this is, the plan's not being proffered, but I would imagine from a engineering standpoint, they have to have that private access. The intent is they have proffered no driveways off of Floris.
So this will mean that when the, I guess, the site plans come into planning and get discussed, they're going to have to provide for garbage pickup behind the townhouses, not in front because of the ditch?
Correct.
Okay, very good. That's all the questions for now. I do have one for Tarek, when he gets ready to come up, unless the petitioner wants to speak.
Yeah, I got a follow-up. Go ahead.
What is the typical width of an alley that will allow for the trash trucks and EMT and things like that?
So our private road standards has a minimum width of 20 feet. So that's typically, when we were developing the private road standards as part of our design manual, that's the minimum that the fire and rescue folks want, is at least 20 feet width.
Okay.
So.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that was typical. Thank you.
Follow-up question, Mr. Thompson. North and south, all the properties on Floris Road, are they providing sidewalk easements?
No.
So why are we, are we requiring this, or is, they doing it voluntarily?
There was, we are requesting it. Again, intention is to, again, it's just an easement, so at some future point when we have additional easements to be able to build sidewalk, again, with it being so close to the city, and also be, whenever trying to encourage more pedestrian activity. So they were willing to proffer an easement. Originally, I think at the planning commission, there was some conversation of wanting them to build a sidewalk along it, and so the planning commission thought that easement meant what they, until you have other, because again, part of it is building a sidewalk that doesn't really go anywhere, so by the easement, you have the ability to work with other property owners to maybe have a more continuous sidewalk. And so, again, it is a pretty dense area, and you're right there at the city, so try to encourage pedestrian activity.
So that 10 feet in is going to hamper them developing their property?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. Okay, any questions more? Okay, we invite the petitioner to come up if he'd like.
Hello, hello? Good evening. Thanks for your time tonight. It's been a while since I've seen you. We're going to do a very short presentation. Normally, we'd sort of talk about our company, but I think you know us, and we don't want to keep you any longer than necessary, so we're not going to do that. We just don't want to waste your time. So I do want to just be, to quickly say, first of all, I was before this body, I don't remember how many years ago, and my cousin Mark Frayland was, his father was here, my uncle, to rezone this property to self-storage. And so that's kind of interesting that things have come full circle. And so the team that's here, you have Andrew Folsom with ECI. She, any technical, I know some of you had some technical questions about stormwater traffic and should, and he's here to answer all those questions. Brandon Sargent, who some of you may know, is head of construction for our company, and he's just been a terrific member of our team and just a good person. And Brian McHale, who won't speak, unless he would like, but he's my partner, and he's our COO and CFO of the company, and has been with us almost 10 years, and that's been great. And you've heard from Wynne before, Wynne Phillips, she went over street, and she is our operations manager, and she will give the presentation. And then part of our team tonight is my cousin Mark, and he's signed up to speak as a citizen. I hope that's okay. Just briefly, yeah, we already went over the sidewalk issue. It's not a deal killer for us. Sometimes these sidewalk things are awesome, and I'm all about citizens moving about on sidewalks. This is, we felt in this particular case, and I'd love you to analyze it, if you really want us to put it in, it's not that big of a deal, but it's really a sidewalk to nowhere. It's, and we have a slide that'll show you sort of the visibility of it, that there's Roanoke City with a bunch of driveways on one side, and then there's a commercial, sort of an extended stay on the other, neither of which can really take sidewalks. And so it didn't really make sense to encourage our people to go to Floris Drive, which is a little busier. So again, it's not a deal killer for us, it just didn't make sense. And that's it. And then you likely will have some questions later, and I'm here to answer any of those that you would have of me, but I think I'll let people that are better than I am do the talking tonight, so I'm just going to sit down, unless you have any questions now.
I think you're good to let her take over.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board. Thank you for hearing us tonight and considering our petition. Thank you for your service to Roanoke County and its citizens. I always enjoy working with Roanoke County. I work in Roanoke County and need housing to sell to new citizens of Roanoke County. I'm going to briefly take you through presentation. Please feel free to stop me at any time. I'm sure you have questions for some of those other gentlemen that are a little more specific, but happy to answer anything about this project, housing in general. To give you a little bit of background, I'm sure I've spoken to all of you individually and then as a group before. I started with our Frayland Construction in what we call our home operations team, working with clients under contract and helping them with their builds, and learned a lot about housing at that point. That was right after COVID, and then graduated to work with our property management team, so then started helping people find rentals and being able to work with that part of our business. And I've come just about first, full circle, I'm interim sales manager, so helping with our sales team and kind of getting back into the new construction, and always a joy to start from the beginning with rezoning. I'm going to go through, and as much detail, but maybe a little quickly as possible, as a lot of these plans will look pretty similar. So we've got some of our townhome and duplex plans here for you. They're going to be 1,400 to 1,600 square feet, two to three bedrooms, two and a half baths, with a one-car garage. This particular rendering we did in a community in Kensington, and you have kind of a reverse plan, so it is a rear entry, which would apply to this concept, does have a little more privacy that way, with the kitchen out looking over the front, and a likeness of, pretty similar to what we ended up doing in that project. Got a townhome duplex here. You will see these coming up along Hunt Ridge Road, right here in Roanoke County. This is similar to the concept that we use there, about the same size, slightly different layout, two to three bedrooms, two and a half baths, with a one-car garage, which you'll see throughout these townhome plans. Thinking of the townhome as kind of like our new starter ranch, it's probably the most affordable option that we can offer to hopefully first-time home buyers, as it is a two-story plan. An example of a single-family detached plan, this is our Richmond. It's been a while since we've had a project that accommodates this kind of, I'm going to call it kind of a tweener, for land. It looks like a smaller version of some of our other builds that we've built recently. 1,880 square feet, three to four bedrooms, two and a half baths, one-car garage. And our Avery, a younger brother to our Ashton Plan, which we have quite a few of available on the market now, right under 2,000 square feet, four bedrooms, two and a half baths, with a two-car garage, great for families. What's really special, and I think great about, no matter what product we're building, is we are able to offer equitable finishes throughout. I mean, certainly there's difference between a $600,000 house and a $200,000 house, but we are able to offer nine-foot ceilings on the first floor, luxury plank flooring throughout, probably one of my favorite flooring materials, as it gives you the look of hardwood, but is super durable. Solid surface countertops, could be granite, could be quartz, could be some other great stone, if we can find something else, and stainless steel appliances. You guys have seen this before, this is just a slightly different-looking version of our concept plan.
Big Mark.
Yes, sir. Would you like me to go through this again? Happy to do it. All right, so there was some discussion, and I'm sure we'll come back to this. These are some views, which you all probably have seen in person, and I know staff has analyzed, as well as our engineers, of adjacent property in Roanoke County, so showing that road frontage along Floris. Some more. And of course, we're here because we would love to offer more housing to Roanoke County, especially affordable housing. Any questions of me? I know I've got all the answers. I really don't have any of them.
Any questions of our petitioner?
No, we appreciate the presentation and getting to work with you folks. I think this is a good product for this site, because we need entry-level homes to get people moving up in the housing market from first-time renters to these type houses and then so forth. So you, we've seen what you've built in Hunt Ridge, and they seem to be selling very quickly.
Love to sell more. But yes, I think, as I believe Philip mentioned, and I think we mentioned at Planning Commission, and you all are very familiar, it's really hard to anticipate between where we are today and when we actually get to putting houses on the market. Luckily, we have a great business, a lot of experience, so that's why with this plan, I think it gives us the flexibility to be able to provide the right product mix.
Okay, and have you come, arrived at a price point?
Depending on the housing type, I think your smallest would be $275-ish, if we, today's dollars, today's dollars. And then your single-family, we'd be looking all up into the fours, low fours probably. It'll depend on a lot of factors, as we all know, I think. I was thinking, sitting there thinking, I was like, affordable. I often hesitate to use the word affordable, because historically, it has a different definition, but in today's economy, I think it rings true for a lot of us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everybody good?
Yeah, I'm good. I just have a question.
I can stay here all night, no, I'd really rather not, I'm just kidding.
Assuming the board approves it tonight, when will you start building?
Ooh, that's probably a better question for the lovely gentleman behind me. I'd say as soon as possible, always. Yes, sir?
Immediately.
Yeah.
Which means we need an engineer, and that takes a minute, although I will say, not to Brown, but to you, Roanoke County, and if there's anybody from another locality.
Either pick up the mic or come forward.
So the answer is immediately, and to sound like I'm sort of pandering to you, Roanoke County is by far, and there may be another locality looking at this, and I almost hope they are, by far the most professional entity with whom we work, and we work with about 13 localities.
You're pandering well.
Well, it's true. They're professional, they meet their timelines, they're, it's just, it's a great place to do business.
No, it's just, I think all of us realize that we need housing, not just in Roanoke County, but in the entire region. Love to have you build it, but I just, I think we've approved some other developments, and some have gone forward and others have languished, and so just kind of get a sense of what your plan is.
Sure.
Because I understand there's financing issues and engineering issues and plan development issues, but just kind of wondering, sort of a guesstimate as to a timing.
Yeah, I tell people that I have no marketable skills other than this, so this is what I do, so we plan to, plan to do it right away.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, then we are going to go to open the public hearing, and we have one petition. All right, hold it before we do that.
I do have a question for Tarek. Tarek, if you come up just a minute, please. Seems like the word this evening in many of our discussions is stormwater, and that's where I'm going.
Under your disposal.
You know a little bit about stormwater, do you?
A little bit, sir.
The ditch on Floris, I understand from staff, is deemed inadequate. How's that going to be addressed?
I cannot answer that at the moment, because we didn't do any analysis. That was just based on visual observations. All the engineering plans will determine that. We have, we have looked at some contour line plans, but Mr. Frayland's team, including the engineer, will be able to provide that and will review that as part of the plan review, sir.
Good. I understood there was some concern by some citizens, and that's why I was asking the question for the record. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'm ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to open the public hearing. When your name is called, please come forward, state your name and address prior to sharing your comments. Each person is permitted to speak up to three minutes. At the front of the podium is a light system, and that tells you how much time you have remaining. When the light changes from green to red, please share any concluding remarks. You have three minutes, and then when it turns from yellow to red, your remarks are ended. And I have one to speak. If you'll just come up and give us your name and address, Mark Frayland.
My name's Mark Frayland, 116 Belmore Lane, Daleville, Virginia, behind Robotatot. And my dad's owned this land for years, and I think originally he wanted to put a plant nursery there, but then he changed his mind and wanted to put a storage area there, storage units. He had to get that rezoned, he did, but then he passed away probably about 14 years ago, so he never did it. And I guess we've, our family's been trying to sell it for like 20 or 30 years on and off, and it's just got two storage buildings on it and vacant land, like 17 and a half acres. So we're just trying to sell it, and my cousin wants to buy it, and of course, we had to give him the family discount. And any questions?
Yeah, we don't, we don't usually ask questions for the public.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Appreciate you coming forward.
Yes, sir.
And giving us the family history.
We didn't know about the family discount.
That's right. Any, any other petitions? Any, any other petition, any other people to speak? Okay, so at this time, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to thank the cooperation with your team. I had some questions, and Brandon got back pretty quickly. We appreciate that. Many of these were simple questions, but at the same time, it helped me to get my hands around it. I want to appreciate the visits that were made about this project last May, Robert, but also most recently when, I think, Quinn came over and Brandon met with Tammy and I. So, cooperation's good, your products is what's needed in the marketplace, and we hope that you do build them as quickly as the plans can be approved. With that said, I would like to find that the proposed rezoning request is mostly consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comp plan, as 63 of the 69 proposed dwelling units are consistent with the core designation of the county's adopted comprehensive plan. Two, it is good zoning practice, and three, will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request with the following six proffers that has been requested and that have been signed off by the petitioner, and I think they've been submitted as part of the package, and I don't need to read those. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The housing guy was going to second it, but y'all beat me to it. Okay, sorry. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing non clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Rappert?
Yes. Okay, we move on to item K, reports and inquiries of board members. Ms. Hooker, you're up first.
I only have one real quick comment, and that is that we certainly enjoyed going to the regional chamber event this morning, where we had a group of 10 of our regional representatives there with updates on the general assembly. It was quite informative and a pleasure to see those individuals again, and appreciated the chamber's work to make that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Mahoney?
Last evening, I had the honor and pleasure of attending Bob Johnson's 80th birthday party.
Oh.
For history, and I think history of Roanoke County's important. Mr. Johnson was on this board as soon